Welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting for the Town of Acton, Maine for February 19, 2020. First item is salute the flag.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Town Administrator Weekly Update.
Hi. All right, so first thing I just want to make you aware of is that we got something, we got a letter in the mail from Saco River Corridor Commission, just letting us know that a property owner at MAP 106, Lot 8, was installing a whole house generator and a second propane tank. I did let code enforcement look it over. I think that based on his location, they required to notify the town, but that did come in, so I wanted you to be aware of that.
It's kind of the same ideas like CMP when they do the pole work, they send a letter in just to...
Right to certain abutters and based on the zoning of the area.
So anything we need to sign or do anything with this?
Nope, and I double-checked with code enforcement to see if he had any concerns or anything we needed to know.
Just because it was within shoreline or something?
I don't know the specifics of all you were listed on there.
Okay.
But he was already aware of the permits and more of an FYI.
He had no issues with it?
Nope.
Okay.
I've been working with the superintendent down there. As you know, we've been advertising. We did get typically eight or nine different applications. Him and I sat down today and kind of sorted through them. He chose who he believed to be the top four, just based on resumes. We would like to, with the board's permission, to sit down and do a first round, kind of narrow it down to a couple, and then we'd bring the liaison in to help make a final decision.
Sounds good.
I'll start with that.
Yep.
Public notice that came from downstairs, there's a public notice, a public hearing on Thursday, February 20th, it is this Thursday. We didn't meet last week, so it would have been in last week's packet. It's a two-lot subdivision the planning board is looking at from Pat Stevens, MAP 240, Lot 14. They just wanted you to be aware. ADT was in today to install the last camera, so the last camera that's installed downstairs. I made sure that staff came up so that they could see where it was placed in the direct shot that we talked about without getting into the desks, more for the public that comes in and out, so I made sure that they came up and saw that on the screen. While they were here, they were required to do some testing of our heat detectors, which are located throughout the building. This room has two heat detectors, one of them, which is right above you, and neither of which are working, because it appears that over time, people that rent the hall are putting decorations on them. So there is tape on them, if you look closely, and you actually walk throughout the building, you can see the tape everywhere. Unfortunately, so much tape was put on the sensor pieces, it's been peeling off the paint, and neither one of them are functional in this office. They did quote me immediately on getting them replaced. I mean, the executive decision was only a couple hundred bucks each, I mean, they're kind of unnecessary, so we've got them coming in to replace those within the next day or two. We'll work on the policy and start reminding more people to make sure when they hang from the ceiling, to please not touch those.
Yep.
Pull the sign next door.
Yeah, so I'll figure something out. So that's that. They're also working on quotes for smoke detectors, now that we have our pulse stations, that there are no smoke detectors in the building. Ed, you probably know better, the specific details, the difference between a heat and a smoke detector, so they're going to work on something that I'll bring forward to you before we do anything.
Okay.
Fire chief does not have them. Next is the, so I told you that the ADT was in and installed six pulse stations throughout the exits, based on the recommendation of where the fire chief chose. For some reason, something's going on with the pulse station in the library. They installed them on Tuesday, by late yesterday, probably five, six o'clock. I think I sent you a text and I'm letting you know that there, something's wrong with that one, it's malfunctioning. They are wireless pulse stations, so they sent technicians back out today. They believe it might have something to do with the distance from the box that's in my office. And I don't know if you noticed when you were having, one of our last conversations, they called again today, about a half hour ago, to say it's still triggering some sort of default, so they're coming back out tomorrow. They are working on it. Mayor Grant Committee has scheduled a meeting on February 29th, it is a Saturday. There is no direct liaison for the mayor grant. I did double-check the original list, but a committee member has specifically asked for a selectman to attend the meeting. I did kind of say that without a liaison, you know, the conversation you guys can have, it may fall under the chairman as one of the town hall ones, but I don't know if anybody's available that Saturday.
What date again?
Twenty-ninth.
What time, nine?
I feel like it's 11:00. I have to double-check though.
It's here.
It's going to be here. I haven't updated it yet, so check back with me, but it'll be on the website too in the next...
Okay.
Cheryl, can we make a note of that to add the mayor grant to the website, please? All right, so I'll let you know what time and maybe one of you can go. You saw the emails back and forth regarding Betty Smith and the Acton-Chapley Youth Corps, the plans that she wanted to maybe come before you with the special projects. It was a little short notice for tonight, although she appreciated Ed's enthusiasm. She will be here next Wednesday at 6:00.
That's why I said, tonight and tomorrow.
Tonight and next week, whatever. She's like, wow, I called her, and she's like, wow, that's great, but give her a little time to prepare.
Yep.
So. We've got an email from the Department of Agriculture, Conservation, and Forestry dated February 18th, letting you know that the brown-tail moth caterpillar has been found significantly in this area. It talks about some of the rashes and other respiratory diseases that it can cause in insensitive individuals. It goes on to talk about the different links that they have, and in closing, I strongly encourage you to provide information about this pest to your town residents if they're not already aware. And it's got a lot of contact information, so we've posted this accordingly, we'll get it on cable, but certainly if anybody has any concerns, we have contact information we can pass along. ACO has been busy. He has, I think, three dog bites, a dangerous dog, some, a bat issue, which did come back negative for rabies, but he's got a lot going on and is filling the seat well. We got the first part of the online training scheduled for him through Augusta, and they just announced that they're going to do Phase 2 training, April 29th, 30th, and May 1st. That's good, they moved it from October to April, so we'll get him certified quicker.
Nice.
See the emails that I've sent around regarding franchise fees and MetriCast? We've done some digging, and what appears now has happened is that Atlantic Broadband paid the town for 5% franchise fees, when in fact, they had been correctly charging the users of MetriCast 4.5%. If you remember, for those of you that were on the board, last time we negotiated, we had them drop it to 4.5. Michelle got the franchise fee, and that's kind of where the communication started. They will be sending us a letter to tell us how much we owe them. So they overpaid us 0.5%. One of the things that you're going to find under new business tonight is a right to redemption letter. Unfortunately, we did take a property that has a building on it by mature tax lien last week, and today, the deputy and the treasurer went over to the property. We're required by main municipal to put this property on our insurance, so I wasn't able to leave the building. So Michelle went over and looked it over. I had Sevigny go with her. He did open the door so that some pictures could be taken. It's not a very stable building at all. I've sent an email to code enforcement, I spoke to him about it tonight, asked him to look at it tomorrow. I expect that it may be condemned before the right redemption period, but we've got it posted. We're going to have to spend some money to board up the walls and windows and keep it somewhat secure while it's in our possession, until we see what the, if the property owner makes their response to our right to redemption letter, assuming you guys sign it. And I do have pictures, if you'd like to see them. Last night, I attended the Sanford Council meeting primarily as a Chapley selectman, but did mention the title I hold as the Acton Administrator, and basically shared concerns that I had with the lack of communication with Sanford and the dam coalitions and this possible decrease. For the taxpayers that don't know, right around the special town meeting date, we got an email from the building facility director from Sanford saying that it was possible that the project was going to come in $25,000 less than anticipated. We didn't get any clear answers before the special town meeting, so not knowing if that's really going to happen, we certainly went forward with the original bill that we had. It's possible if it comes in 25,000 less, that Sanford would be 14,000 less, and Acton and Chapley would both be looking at about a $7,000 decrease. We sent numerous emails between myself and the treasurer since the 24th of January up until Freedom of Information request on February 8th to the city of Sanford, trying to get to the bottom of where these numbers came from and how it would affect our two towns, if at all, with no response. So last night, I, with a fellow selectman in Chapley, stood before the city council and shared our concerns, which was not an easy task to do, but nevertheless, it was under public comment, so there was no correspondence, so I'll keep you posted.
Thank you.
It was tough to do. Looking out for Chapley and Acton, that's what we're supposed to do, right? I know that you guys know this already, but it is official correspondence, so I wanted to make sure that it came before you. Letter from Department of DEP indicating the conditional contract awards for the stream crossing projects. Unfortunately, Acton didn't make the list, and you got notified this, but they sent us, this was for the grant that we had applied for. They sent an official notification, unfortunately, that we didn't make that round. Last week worked out that we didn't have a selectman's meeting. We were inundated with emails regarding, from a resident in Acton, you know, regarding, so their Freedom of Information request, the law is clear, and I think I sent you guys an email of an upcoming training, I would like one of you to join me at, in Portland, that they're having on Freedom of Information. You know, we can request that taxpayers fill out our form, it's easier and it's a clean process for us, but we can't require it. So we have gotten a lot of emails regarding Tattle Street, surrounding roads, history, votes on private roads. I have CC'd you guys in all of them, some of them I have personally called and read them to you to make sure that you feel that I'm answering them appropriately, but some of them I just can't answer. So if I've CC'd you and I, and said, you know, please, please try to help me out, maybe answering them, maybe you have something to add to it. I did also reach out to council and was reminded that, you know, it's my job as a Freedom of Information Administrator to help residents and, or whomever's making the request, find the information, not find it for them and give them the answer, and that may be the area that I personally struggle with. So if, you know, you wanted to know when Flat Ground Road was first voted on, my response is really should be, here are the town meeting books that that would be recorded in, you're welcome to come in and sit down and do them, rather than, you know, eight, 10, 15 hours worth of research trying to find it. So I had a good conversation with legal, helped word some of my responses, and hopefully they went over well with you guys. Another Freedom of Information that my office is working on is looking for tax payments and who made the tax payments from 1972 to present. By law, we are required to keep all receipts for six years, so for six years, I will be able to find those. Seventy-two to present would be just the tax commitment books, so Cheryl and I have been working on that.
The same, same...
I know, this is an attorney for unrelated case.
Okay.
Got a request from a property owner asking us to put something on the sign out front regarding the gym. It was a great idea. I did respond to her, telling her that due to the weather and the conditions and getting the ladder out there, that generally, you'll see in the winter, I put something on there that can last all winter, like the website, or something that doesn't expire, just because it's not really safe to get him out there regularly changing it, but if the weather breaks, certainly we'll get that out there for them. Working with the planning board, a few of them, I think I told you, one of my emails came to the window, got most of their emails reset, and hope to have something out to each one of them individually to, so they can start using them again. I told you, Ed, Ed mentioned to me that he still really wanted to move forward with the Gmail accounts. Between Michelle and I scheduled, we haven't had time to get together and talk about those things, but it's on our list, and we're hoping to do that tomorrow. I think that's it.
Good.
Week in a nutshell.
Two weeks in a nutshell.
Two weeks in a nutshell, yeah. Well, I sent you, did you see the emails? You must have saw the emails. Last week, I sent you an email each day of a recap of that day, because I didn't want to forget anything and miss something, and certainly wanted you to be aware of all the correspondence that go through the town.
Thank you very much. You've signed the warrants, right?
I did.
Okay, so, okay. You and I still have to sign them?
I have.
You haven't signed them, right?
I haven't signed them.
Okay.
No.
Okay. Okay. Hold on that, we'll get that, we'll get done. Approval of the agenda?
Make a motion, approve the agenda for February 19, 2020.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed. Okay. Minutes of the last meeting?
Yep, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the last meeting, which was February 5th.
Yep.
Okay.
Second that.
Moved and seconded to approve February 5th minutes. Any further discussion on that? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed. Department Hedge Committee Chair update. We have any?
Joyce Backshee, Planning Board, Jennifer, we kind of guessed, Planning Board will be meeting in this room tomorrow night.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, you know, I hope it's a nice night, and...
And this is for your, for the Stevens subdivision, right? Or you had other things?
No, no, tomorrow's a regular meeting, and the agenda's posted.
Oh, okay.
Stevens subdivision will be on an off Thursday.
Oh, I thought I just saw that it was the public hearing, I got notice.
Oh, the public hearing is tomorrow night.
Tomorrow, okay.
I'm sorry, the other one, yeah. Well, we've got public hearing...
You've got a lot going on, yeah.
Yeah, you got it.
Okay.
A lot going on.
Yeah.
That's at 7:00 tomorrow.
Yes.
Okay.
Girl Scouts know they'll be in and out, 5:30 to 6:30, and that'll leave plenty of time for the camera.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Leslie Berlin, Road Committee Chair. I'm going to read this, and I would ask that I not be interrupted while I'm reading it. "I reviewed the new proposed application with great dismay. It imposes an undue and unnecessary burden on the very taxpayers the law intended to help and who contribute over 80% of the taxes collected while receiving very little in services. This new application will in essence shut down this program. The drive to revise the application was spearheaded by a selectman who publicly stated he didn't agree with Article 43 and voted against it. I believe this bias should have disqualified him from taking on this task. The road committee, who by ordinance has first vetting, was not consulted in any conversations, did not attend, nor was informed of any workshops. The Board of Selectmen initially assured the process of revising this application would be open and fair. It has been anything but open and fair. Title 1, Section 401 states that the people's business be conducted openly. Deliberations are to be conducted openly. Clandiside meetings, conferences, or meetings on private property without proper notice or ample opportunity for attendance by the public may not be used to defeat the purpose of this subchapter. In fact, according to MMA, under right to know, the Legal Services Packet states, 'The right to know law does not prohibit all communications between individual board members outside of properly noticed public proceeding. These communications, however, must not be used to defeat the purpose of the law.' For example, board members may communicate with each other by phone, email, or otherwise to develop agendas, schedule meetings, or distribute information for discussion at an upcoming meeting. Board members may not discuss, deliberate on, or make any decision on substantive matters pending before the board outside a properly noticed public meeting of the board. Since for boards of three, only two members need to be present to constitute a quorum, a telephone call or email between two members involving substantive discussions, deliberations, or decisions on town business is likely a violation of the law.' End of quote. I would also contend that a select board member instructing the town administrator to contact other board members to get their opinion is circumventing this law, in addition to putting the town administrator in an untenable position. The fines for violation start at $500, go to $1,000 for a second violation, and all subsequent violations are $2,000. I have attended, either attended or watched, all Board of Selectmen meetings. I heard no reference to a licensed environmental engineer discussed at a meeting. How did this requirement get inserted into the application with no public discussion by the Board of Selectmen? This is just one example of the lack of transparency that exists in our town government. I spoke at length with Wendy Garland at DEP on January 23rd regarding the repair/maintenance issue. Her take was, the problem lies in the lack of definitions. The statute's ultimate goal is protecting water quality. The statute, most probably by design, left room for interpretation. This gray area allows for much leeway. The state appears to have not wanted to hamstring the towns in their effort to protect the lakes. According to Wendy Garland, re-crowning a gravel road can be defined as a repair. Once the crown has been damaged, it must be repaired properly to direct runoff. The DEP will also fund maintenance if it goes with a repair on their 319 grants. She thought this was not unreasonable. I also attended a conference on stormwater management today and spoke with a representative from E.J. Prescott. I explained the differing opinions regarding this issue, and he stated we could most definitely define grading and re-crowning a gravel road to be a repair. In addition, a citizen of Acton spoke with Amanda Pratt from DEP, and she told him that she spoke with the town and confirmed what Wendy had said. Under home rule, we could certainly reimburse for this for the simple fact the state has not defined either repair or maintenance. All that is necessary is town meeting to make the definitions clear. 3106-1.C states, 'DEP or the municipality determines whether the private road is contributing to the degradation of water quality. Nowhere in the statute does it require a stringent and potentially expensive licensed environmental engineer in lieu of town judgment. I for one, to like to know how the attorney who drafted this application arrived at this requirement. My guess is he was instructed to include that language. Speaking of choice of attorney, does the attorney who drafted this new application have any special expertise in these issues? Why wasn't the land attorney used to draft this document? Was he consulted and didn't give the desired answer? In regards to the strident criteria the Board of Selectmen wish to impose on the private roads, are they also going to require the road commissioners follow the same set of rules? Do the road commissioners and their employees need DEP or a licensed environmental engineer to certify their work in a great pond's watershed? If not, why? Bear in mind, road commissioners, both present and past, do quite a bit of work on private roads. Do these same road commissioners suddenly lose the ability to make good decisions once they cross the line from a town road onto a private one? If there are not consistent standards for public and private roads in the watershed, then this is not about water quality, but it is a way to deny access to Article 43 funds. Thank you.
So, sir chair, first thing, I just want to point out a couple things for Mrs. Berlin to be able to review. So on the January 22nd meeting, I'm sorry, the January 15th meeting, that was the meeting that Article 43 was discussed in regards to the Attorney General's Office, and that's when the board learned that the Attorney General's Office wasn't willing to look into that. Therefore, if you look at the minutes from my update on the 29th, you will see that the selectmen will meet with council to discuss Article 43. My assistant behind you can attest that that meeting with the Board of Selectmen and the attorney was posted under Freedom of Information in that hallway. So it was an open meeting, they met with him, and they then sat in a round table with the attorney and made recommendations, and if they want to update you on that, they can. From there, the board, two weeks ago, last week at a meet, two weeks ago, got handed the packet. They haven't spoken even, as far as I know, with each other about the recommendations. It's under old business tonight, so for the first time to them review it, but that meeting they met with council was posted.
And I guess, I don't even know where to start, but we had the meeting with the lawyer. We asked him, you know, what way we can make this work, especially after we looked at the letter that was drafted by the lawyer back when it was first being put through, and the lawyer had given the board at the time, a piece of paper saying, this is what you've got to do, okay? And that wasn't done. And then we're looking at it, and at the same time, we've got to come up and make sure we're doing this right. So we're looking at the lawyer's letter, and we talked about it with him. And we, what we were trying to do was do exactly what they said on that paper, was it was originally set to be sort of like a grant. And so, but at the same time, to make it a grant, you have to have guidelines. And instead of just having people who think they have knowledge, like, like, I think I have knowledge, there's people in this room who think they have knowledge, to say, this is what needs to be done, I thought it was a good idea to have either DEP, because if you read the thing that Wendy Garland sent us, she's the one who told us it wasn't set up for maintenance. So what we did is we're looking at what her response, and so we're trying to go off those, these people who do know what they're talking about, and say, okay, well, the only way we can take ourselves out of the picture and make sure that this gets done right is put professionals in charge of this. So we had talked about DEP. Well, the problem with DEP is, is DEP gets spread thin, we don't want roads having to wait around. I came up with the option of get a construction consultant, okay? Now, this construction consultant, you would end up getting reimbursed anyways, back through, if you wanted to, whatever, through Article 43. But what it does, because after all this took off, now we're getting complaints from other citizens, saying, this is illegal, blah, 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 coming back on us that we've paid out money that we shouldn't have. So now we've got to cover our tail to make sure we're not doing it wrong again, so...
Cover everybody on the committee that is involved with it, too.
And answer to Leslie's...
Honestly, myself, I do take offense that, I know where this is pointing at me, because I'm the one, I'm the new guy on the board, I'm obviously the one that's pushed the issue, because when it started with the auditor, then I jumped on board with it. And, but I take offense that I'm biased, because honestly, when you're on the road committee and you're receiving funds from Article 43, then you're just as biased as I am, okay?
I think our auditor.
And our auditor told us we were doing wrong. Then we turn our, look at our lawyer's letter, said we're doing wrong. Wendy Garland says we're doing wrong. Our lawyer says we're doing wrong. So we're trying to fix this. Now, you can come up here and say that I am trying to blow the whole thing up. You know what our lawyer said? You'd be better off getting rid of Article 43, and we said, no, we weren't going to do that, okay? So you can come up here, make your threat, oh, we're going to get fined, we posted that meeting, you are welcome here, this is the first meeting that you've been here, a month anyways. Okay, don't come up here like you know what's going on. This has been posted, we've been talking about this issue, we're trying to solve this problem, but don't come up here and make threats that we're going to get fined, because we did, we're doing what we need to do, okay? I don't know, Dennis, you've been in all the meetings lately, but everybody's welcome, that door's open, okay? And that was one of the things we were going over. And we have a draft right now. Now, this is not killing this at all. If we want to kill this, we'd try, I would be pushing right now to have it on town floor to get rid of it.
I think it's easier to kill it than it is to make it work.
Exactly, but we're trying to make it work.
And can I...
And we don't, yeah, so...
Not you, the town board.
Exactly, but I'm not the one...
Let's, whoa, whoa, let's not get into a discussion, no, let's not get into a discussion that doesn't include the podium.
Excuse me, I, we can, we have to change this, okay? That's the whole idea, because we did wrong. If you'd seen the letter that was given, okay, the letter says, we have to do this, 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 and that, and I can name them all off, but none of that was done. Then you threw something at town meeting that wasn't defined. Now we're all like, whoa, gee, what do we do now? Well, we just approve everything. But then when someone makes a comment saying you're doing it wrong, okay, and then you look into it, and then everybody gets up in uproar, okay? We're trying to make it right. We have a draft right now. That's not killing, this isn't killing it. All this is doing is saying, we're dedicating this money to where it needs to go.
Just make sure everybody's got their...
Instead of people want to grade their roads.
And if I can just add one more piece for the attorney piece for Mrs. Berlin. So, when this originally went before with the prior board in June of 2018, and it was sent over to council, the board at that time chose their general attorney, Burke and Clegg, to look at it. He did make a recommendation shortly after town meeting. We sent him an email, and I think you've seen that, that kind of says, "It passed. Now what?" So, he put in stipulations on how we should handle it. The board at that time chose to kind of, you know, get away from that. They didn't follow the instruction of the board, but of the attorney, the recommendation of the attorney, which, not to say they have to, but... So, when it came back and they had more questions and wanted to keep talking about it, that's why they went back to that attorney. Mr. Lankowski has never been discussed with Article 43 funds, so that's just for...
And the other thing with Lankowski, he's a citizen of the town of Acton, and he lives on a private road, or not a private road, but a road that may, actually, is a public road.
So, the other attorney is who we used from June of 18, when he authorized, when he, not approved, but when he, he said that it was a legal article to put on when it was first written, Article 43. That's where the attorney started, and that's who we've kept with along the way, just so you know.
It is. It's a legal article.
So, it's on the agenda. It's on the agenda. I had planned, because as I mentioned, the last week we didn't meet, the week before that was the first time since the workshop that he sent it over. So, that's the first, and I gave it to you guys as a draft. I told you, you know, so I was planning on going over it tonight for the first time as a roundtable, if you want, because I haven't discussed it.
And I just got one quick question for you, Leslie. E.J. Prescott, the person you talked to, E.J. Prescott?
His name was Doug. I don't have his last name.
What's he do?
Stormwater management.
Okay.
He sells stormwater.
For those that don't know, E.J. Prescott...
His presentation today was on crack ceiling and keeping the surface of roads in good shape.
Okay. Well, for those that don't know, E.J. Prescott is a pipe and stormwater company that sells, they sell pipe, they sell stormwater management equipment, tools, catch basins, anything to do with sewage, anything to do with fresh water, anything to do with public water, the piping systems, okay? I personally know Steve Prescott and Peter Prescott, the owners of that company, okay? So, I'll be calling them tomorrow and just double-checking and seeing why their employee is trying to afford something that a town is trying to put together. So, thank you.
They're salespersons.
They are.
That's what they are. And I've been to those meetings where it's E.J. Prescott, other companies, they come in, they sell you product.
They're a great company.
And I use them all the time.
Yeah. They're a superb company, probably the Cadillac of companies that do that, but, you know, so I will, I'll be calling them in the morning. So, any other department heads, committee chairs?
We've got somebody else coming in.
Sure, come right out.
Is he a department head?
I have a question.
Are you a department head, committee chair?
No.
Okay. You've got to wait till public comments. Thank you. So, no other public comments, no other department heads, I mean, no other department heads, committee chairs? Okay. We're going to move on to Old Business. We have Article 43.
Did I just, so I gave you guys a copy. Did I just give you another copy?
Yep.
Okay. And I'm also giving you an email that Adele Scratchfield called me, and she had some concerns with it. I did explain to her that the board had just seen it. We had not had a roundtable discussion. I told her it was going to be on tonight's agenda. She didn't comply with her commitment, wasn't able to make it, and she sent you a lengthy email that I assured her I would pass along to you.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm going to be nothing but honest with you. I haven't read this since you sent it over. I knew we hadn't met. I did sit through the workshop, so can we just kind of go through it and, I mean...
Sure.
All right. So, and obviously, and I did say this, I think, to Leslie, one of the things, when she asked for the copy, I said, "We hadn't cleaned this up. I haven't touched it at all." So, it's not formatted like an administrator would like to see, but I'm sure that's minor. So, general instructions, answers and documentation for each category must be supplied with the application. Incomplete applications will be rejected. Categories 2, 3, 4, and 5, I don't know where categories are, so that's going to be addressed.
Yep, next page.
Well, right, but it doesn't say, like, I would want to see category 2 listed somewhere. Do you know what I mean? So, I knew as a person what category 2 was, but...
Okay, I see what you're saying.
So, categories 2, 3, 4, and 5 require supporting documentation or reports from main DEP or a licensed environmental engineer hired and paid for by the applicant. So, I guess that's the first thing to kind of toss around. Is that something that, I know that came up in our workshop. I mean, DEP has reached out and certainly has said that they're more than willing to help in any way, so are we pretty confident that they would be, you know what I mean, that...
When I was road commissioner, we had, the DEP, York County soils, they would have, on the lake surveys, they had hotspots, okay? And we'd double them all the time. They would dump, "Okay, we got this spot over here. It's a part of the town way," or "It could be part of a private way," or whatever. And they're right on it. They're always, they come right up, and they take care of that. That's why it's not really a big deal having DEP involved in this.
And do we want to confirm, I mean, should I confirm with somebody at DEP? They let them know we're considering putting this in there just to make sure that they're available, or you think that they will be...
Well, I think that would be a good idea, because we don't want to put, right.
Well, I just, right, but I mean, I hear, I guess, you know, I'm going to, we're going to hear on the other side that we want to, we want to make sure that something is out there, and it's not just a licensed environmental engineer, because I think what I'm hearing in Adele's is that that's going to, it's going to cost them as much to hire the engineer as they're probably going to get back from these funds. So, if we know that DEP is willing to help, then that should level that, right?
And also, it depends on the size of the project, too.
So...
Yeah, I think you should check into it. Make sure they know this is what we're, you know, and they're okay with that. I mean, I know you said it's their job, but still, a heads up would be a good idea.
Sure.
You know, I mean, this is their job. I don't feel comfortable walking out to a road. But somebody has to check it before we release any of these, you know, that's one of the issues, releasing any funds, you know, who's checked it, who's gone through everything.
We need to see what categories 2, 3, 4, and 5 are, because does that, or do you think that's what he means by number 2, number 3, number 4? Is that, no, because there's 6 and 7 anyways.
But 2 you attach, 3 you attach, 4 you attach, and I think it's...
Okay, categories, so, okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, those are the categories that you need to attach, supporting documentation.
But number 6, 6 you have to attach. How come that's not included?
I don't know.
All right.
Well, because it's an estimate, cost repairs.
Right.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha. Right, okay. So, categories must be just really numbered 2, 3, 4, is what it means.
That's what I would say.
All right. So, in order to be eligible for consideration, the applicant bears the burden of proof to demonstrate that all requirements of Article 43 and 23 have been met. For the purpose of protecting or restoring a great pond, main law allows the municipality to appropriate funds refer repair to a private roadway or bridge to prevent stormwater runoff or reaching a great pond. The town, therefore, considers routine maintenance on a private road such as grading, sweeping, plowing ineligible for consideration. So, all but that last sentence is really just, I think, a statement. Is that an accurate statement?
I'm not sure, you know...
Well, I mean, we know they have to, they have to demonstrate the requirements of Article 43. Is there anything in there that we disagree with?
Do they have any maintenance on the private roads? I just feel like we're getting conflicting on whether grading and crowning are something. I know here it says it's ineligible, so I don't know, I don't know what you guys think.
Didn't the board decide as a whole that maintenance was not approved under this article? Didn't you...
That's what we were headed for, yeah. Yeah, because, I mean, if you plow the road in the wintertime, and you get a winter when things aren't frozen, yeah, you could damage the crown of the road, but...
I feel like, and I don't...
Once again, it's maintenance to put that back, I feel. It's something that was already there.
And I feel like, and I don't want to speak out of turn, and I don't want to encourage conversation from the audience, but I feel like the road committee at one point agreed that road, that maintenance wasn't eligible. You know, and I feel like that's an across-the-board agreement.
I thought.
I thought so. I'm shaking it now. Okay, so, we'll table that piece, and I don't know, but is the board intending on letting, I mean, I'm assuming after you get this in some sort of condition, you're going to want the road committee to make an opinion, or at least look at it?
I don't know how the road committee can make an opinion on it, because there's no way you could have the road committee make an opinion on it without being biased. When you're living on camp roads, you're part of, you're collecting money from this. This is legal. We're trying to, we've got to make this work.
And the road ordinance, the road committee ordinance just says that they will review applications once they come in, right? Is that what that said?
And this makes it easier for the actual road committee itself.
They should have all the paperwork when it comes to roads.
All the documentation will be handed, yeah.
There's no gray areas. Everything is black and white.
Which we proved there were gray areas in the last one.
Right, and they proved that. They assisted you with one of them, that they clearly said, right.
It would be nice, when they get this, they've got everything they need to go through it.
All right, so, we need to pull, let's, let me review, let's review all of the emails in regard to this last statement, so we won't make, we're not making any decisions tonight anyways, but we need to find out if, I mean, I guess, you agree with that statement, that last statement, and do we need to look into it? The whole, the town considers routine maintenance on the private road, grading, sweeping, plowing ineligible. I mean, you turned down one road association.
Right, we did.
But I feel like there might be something in our paperwork.
I wanted, I wanted something there that, so it wasn't year to year. I wanted to set up, make it like we do with the LRAP funds. The state of Maine requires us, when we get money from the state of Maine for our excise tax, that when we invest that money into a project, that project has to last a certain period of time. So, to cover our tail end on using it like a grant, okay, we can put a, okay, this project is to be completed, da-da-da-da-da, to last a period of so many years, to be eligible for this money. So, they don't come back every 2 years, because the same spot keeps washing out, and we keep dumping money in the same spot. You know what I'm saying?
They mitigate the problem, they just push it out.
Yeah.
They just keep repairing it.
Because then it turns into a maintenance issue again. So, the state of Maine does that with our town roads. We can do that with our private roads. That way there, we're not wasting money into a spot that's not getting done, or it doesn't get done right the first time, then obviously, it didn't go through the protocol right. Didn't have something down, and didn't have the right person do the job, or you didn't have the right person engineer the job, or whatever, but it cleans up the process.
Yep.
By doing this, I think at some point, we'd be able to lift the amount we give out to make the grant.
That's what I was just going to say, it would have to be higher if they're going to be trying to fix.
So, you could do bigger projects, something that's, you know, instead of just 500 here, 1,000 here, big projects, big problems.
To fix it, right.
Okay, so we'll get back to that piece. So, the next is just basic information, road association name, contact person, telephone number, mailing address, email. With the board's approval, I'd like to add some, like, date information in there, you know, date received to the town administrator, date submitted to the Board of Selectmen, date submitted to the road committee, because the ordinance says that, so that'll help us keep on track to make sure that we get it to all the proper places. So, number 1, attach, I wish I would have brought the last, the old one with me, but I don't have it. Attach proof of proper formation of a road association under the road association statute and/or nonprofit qualification. That was already on there, right?
Yep.
We just didn't ask, no, we did ask for it, except we got the minutes for it. For incorporated associations, attach articles of incorporation, proof of good standings, most recent annual reports, bylaws, minutes, most recent annual meeting. If part of a development in which owners require to become members of the association, produce a copy of applicable deed or declarations. Concerns with that?
I don't think so.
For statutory associations, attach a copy of a notarized call of meetings, bylaws, minutes, most recent annual meeting. Attach proof that this private road is within the watershed of a great pond with documentation from DEP or report of environmental engineering. And that will weigh on what DEP says, what kind of opinion they give you of their willingness to assist in these, is right?
And, you know, the reason why I put down environmental engineer, that opens up the door for AWAR, York County soils, people like that.
So, any of them could give the opinion? And would they give that opinion for free?
They typically do.
Yeah.
Attach proof that this private road satisfies one of the following criteria. Check applicable boxes and attach documentation from DEP or report. So, they only have to answer one of these, satisfies one of these, as I'm reading it? The great pond is listed on the main DEP list of bodies, at most risk. Great pond has been listed as impaired. Water quality monitoring assessment, those were on there, and the great pond is identified as having threats to water quality in a completed watershed. If yes, identify the risk, high, medium, or low. So, if yes, that only applies to C, right? So, that's like a sub of C, so that should be like C1.
Mm-hmm. Should I talk to Wendy Garland? She said that if yes, identify the risk.
Yeah, we're discussing this here.
Let's get through this, and then we can...
We haven't handed it off to the few folks yet.
All right, okay. Attach a statement from DEP or report of environmental engineering demonstrating that the private road is contributing to the declaration of water quality of the great pond based on evaluation using DEP-accepted protocols. And again, I apologize, I don't have an old one in front of me, so I can't cross compare what's new. I think, I mean, obviously, the engineer piece was big. Attached documentation from DEP or environmental engineer identifying the specific work, how to remedy the problem, demonstrating the repairs will comply with the DEP best management practices. Attached supporting documentation for all costs of repairs, including written estimates or invoices, provide copy of paid invoices. So, done after 7:1. So, that was one of the other pieces of the conversation. Doing this, you talked with him about going back to his original opinion from 2018, that it was, you had to do it in advance, but this kind of contradicts that we're, you're accepting the paid invoices, so which way did the board want to go?
Attach supporting documents for all costs of repair.
Yeah, I don't, I don't like the paid invoices.
How do you want to word it?
So, I mean, I guess, what are you saying? Are you saying that they have to apply for this money in advance before any work is done, or are you saying that they can, they can do it after the fact?
I really wanted to see it upfront, you know, obviously, unless it's an emergency, but just for, obviously, budgeting reasons also, but that way there, we know exactly what the project is. You know, I mean, what we've been having a problem with, some of those invoices we're getting are, work was done in the fall.
Two years old.
Springtime, we get it, and the leaves are all over, and we can't see what was, what had happened.
So, you want the, this application is to be filled out before any work gets done?
Yeah, it should be, it should be applied for, just like any other grant.
Just like we're doing with the grant for the lodge culvert.
Yeah, same thing. It's the same idea. You know, you come in, ask for the money upfront.
Right. You get the money and...
You're coming in with a plan, someone says, "Yeah, this is bad. We need money."
Provide copies.
And then, when you get granted the money, at least you know you got it.
Right, yeah, that needs to...
Because right now, they're doing the work, and they're coming to us, and we can say no.
Right.
So...
At least they would know.
So, you want this changed around, that, so you...
Provide copies of estimates.
So you're only gonna, we're gonna go back to his original register, his original email?
On that one, yeah. Yep.
So they have to apply for.
Instead of paid invoices, it should say estimate.
So they show you the estimates in advance. Are you gonna approve it in advance, but then you can't pay for it until the work is done? I mean, how are you gonna handle that? Is that what you're thinking? They'll send estimates in, you'll verbally give them the okay, but then you'll expect the road association to pay it out?
Yeah, because I think we were talking, what we had an issue was, say we do approve it.
You have to pay the road association.
They don't do it within a certain amount of time. I think we were gonna give them like six or seven months or something like that because we didn't want to tie the money up for another roads, you know, other projects. So, you know, so it wasn't like a year or two later on and it's, oh, yeah, we're done now.
Yeah.
Would it be in the spring probably, when most of these are gonna be coming in anyhow?
Spring, summer, fall, you know, who knows?
You could put in there two estimate timeframe for work to be completed?
Yep.
Something to that effect.
Okay, so I'm.
Provide copies of estimate prior.
So I'll take, if that's the direction the board wants to go in, let's pull that original legal opinion he gave you. We'll take some of the wording out of that. Obviously, this is gonna come back and forth for a few weeks before you get it the way you want it. So I'll pull that original one. And that will replace this, but I just need to know what direction you want.
Run that back through.
What direction you wanted to go in?
Run that back through Brad as well, just to make sure the wording is correct.
And, and you're, so you're saying that if approved by the town, the work must be completed within, I mean, six months?
Six months, I would think.
You gotta, well, we have to think about, you know, once you, it's kind of like a purchase order. If you approve a road and you say, okay, you know, you do this and you do everything here, we're gonna give you $3,000. It's kind of, you know, that money's gotta be kind of, at least, you know, taken out on paper. So that it's not, you know, because we don't know where this is going down the road.
We voted on it, we'd have to have Michelle just minus it out in the books as a.
That's why we need a timeframe.
Yeah.
Six months, I don't know if six is enough. Nine might be better.
Nine months?
Yeah, nine months.
Because, you know, really.
I think we got winter in between everything.
Well, take up the time of winter time and apply for it. You gotta get through spring and then they get the summertime, nine months.
Winter, spring, we'd be getting the applications and then they'd have all that time.
Take nine months would be enough?
I think nine's good.
Better than six.
How does, how does this money roll over town meeting wise?
It rolls over, it rolls over and stays in the account.
So we have no issues, yeah.
No issues, right. That was one of the stipulations in the beginning, so.
Yep.
Until it runs out, it rolls over and stays in that fund.
Plus, at the same time, say the, the account starts getting low. We've, we're approving, we're proving, things are coming in.
No, we know, we need to get up and do more.
Get it back into town meeting to.
Well, you'd have to add, right, you would put it on the warrant.
At least we would know ahead of time.
Has the road association applied for the 319 grant before? It did come up and I haven't read Adele's email, but I know that was one of the concerns that she had. She wanted to know what the relevancy was of the 319 grant.
Well, I think the.
Listen, I've proved that they've already been able to get that money and the only way to get those monies is because they've probably checked off all this stuff here. Isn't that what, is that?
I also believe the 319 is if you do the project, it's supposed to the same idea, it's supposed to last a period of time. So you're not applying for the same money to go do the same project that they already got the 319 for.
So I'll get a little bit of clarification on that.
Yep.
All right, good. Can you put on, back on B, well, no, under B, it's number two. Now, we had talked about documentation from DEP or the Environmental Engineer Act. Can we put in parentheses the other, so people know that, you know, they can call.
I'm sorry, say that one more time?
Number three, all right.
Three B? So the grant, the grant pond has been listed as impaired, blah, blah, blah. Okay, assessed by, reported by the DEP and then you want to put or the report. So everywhere DEP is referenced, we'll reference the other piece as well.
Yeah, just so people know they can, you know.
All right, so very, very, very early draft. I will make the change, make some changes, clean it up format wise, get some more answers for you and it'll be back on next week.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else on that? And you've got Adele's email to read.
Okay, anything else on that? New business, US Census validation.
So we had gotten this on, in the mail, Ed, if you remember, it was addressed to you. It came FedEx, I think. I turned it over to the assessor, O'Donnell's and Associates. He received one in all of his towns. It's just census, just asking us to review our mapping lines for the upcoming process. He has done all of that and confirms with it, signature.
Okay. We need to vote on this or anything, or just?
I know, it's just a, you're just, the assessor did, no.
Okay. Just one signature's enough?
Yep.
Right to redemption letter.
So I did choose 30 days. You certainly can, you can increase it if you like. The right to redemption is the foreclosure process that allows the property owner to pay. So they only had to pay the 2017 taxes to stop the foreclosure. That didn't happen, so the lien ripe and the town owns the property. In the past, and I wasn't, you know, I guess I should've asked, but I haven't seen you. In the past, the selectmen have, have generally allowed what they call the right to redemption period. It's not required by law. But this gives the property owner X amount of days to buy the property back and they do that by paying all three years of outstanding taxes and the administration fee, which is $250, that's added in because of all the deeds and all the paperwork, legal paperwork that has to be done. It's done on 30 days because we need to know by April 1st if we own that property or not. Because that's how the tax commitment goes. Because if the town owns it April 1st, the, it's gonna come off the tax rolls. So I've calculated, I think I gave them 32 days.
So if they come in and pay three years' worth of their taxes, the administrator's fee, now we're, we gotta go down there and hire somebody to go board the place up and everything else.
Right.
Are we eating that? I mean, that should be part of the fee.
I mean, that's, that's the gray area. You would be currently, I mean, the two, you know, the $250 would cover some of that. We have to do the, we would create.
I bought some plywood, it's not cheap.
I, I know, I mean, we can, you know, you can make the decision to not board it up. I've got code enforcement going out there tomorrow to look at it and just, you know, to see what he thinks. But if I don't get this letter in the mail, we're tinkering on the April 1st date. And if this individual owns it on April 1st, then he's gonna be responsible for taxes.
I guess the worst case scenario, say he doesn't pay it, we get rid of it, we'll get our money back at the end of it.
Right, and if, I mean, if you, let's just say you end up spending, I mean.
I'm just worried that we go and spend all the money, board it up and all that. Then they decide, we're gonna pay the three months' worth, then we get stuck with all that. Labor and everything else.
In the past, the only buildings that we've, you know, we've ever taken on since I've been here is, it's just a locksmith fee. So this is one of the few times that we've gotten a building in such this condition. But unfortunately, we have liability issues if somebody goes in there.
Right.
Right, I mean, it's not valued very high, but still, yeah.
We have somebody lined up to do that.
Well, my, probably our handyman.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I haven't gotten that far yet, it just happened today.
There is a company that would, that does this type of thing, but that's.
I mean, it's got, it's, a lot of it's gonna depend on what, what code enforcement says tomorrow. We've got no trespassing signs out there, you know, we may not, you know, we may be able to, we may get some legal advice and sit on it for 30 days. And, you know, we've got, we've got our insurance coverage on it, we've got no posting, we can tape it off. I mean, we, we can only make so much attempt. We may not go to that extent.
You're still only keeping the honest people out, no matter how you do it.
Right, so.
Just for liability.
Yep, okay, okay. I know we don't read names on these typically.
Yeah, map and lot, but it's public information at this point.
Yep, yep. So we have, let's see, right to redemption letter. I'm just looking for the map and lot. It's right there. Map 246, lot 028. Located on Milton Mills Road. The amount of money that's owed?
That's three years' worth of taxes.
It can be disclosed, correct?
Yeah, it's all, you could read the whole thing if you wanted to.
Yep, well, $1,607.29 it's owed. They give it till Tuesday, March 24th, 2020, must be paid in full to, to get it back. Certified check, money order, or cash by 4 o'clock on the 24th. What's your wishes?
Make a motion, we sign map number 246, lot 028.
I'll second that.
Move to second to sign the letter. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed? Said it before and I'll say it again, this is the worst part of this project, this job. Really is.
Nobody's living there though, I don't believe.
Yeah, nobody's living there, right?
No.
So it's abandoned.
Yeah, still.
The building value is $5,000.
No, but it's still somebody's property, you know. Okay, Acton Fair letter.
So this letter is addressed to the, to the fair, but it's really, I mean, we haven't put an actual written policy in place. But something that I'd like you to go on the record, you know, based on the workshop that you had with the fire chief last week, I think it was, in regards to numbers.
Two weeks ago.
Yeah. So Fire Chief came to the board of selectmen and spoke to, spoke to them about the mass gathering ordinance and the fact that the mass gathering ordinance indicates that over a certain amount of people, you have to get a permit through the town, but you also have to have some fire rescue coverage on there. The mass gathering ordinance is 19, don't quote me, 72, I believe, is the last time it was changed. And there's nothing in there that really stipulates the, the fees on it. So the conversation that, that's been had, and it's, it's a conversation that some of the selectmen have brought into prior fire chiefs is that, you know, really should the taxpayers be covering the burden of the expenses of having fire and rescue down at, down at an actual event? So they, after careful consideration, decided to put a, a fee in place. I think that the, the fee, like for the, for the Acton Fair, for example, he, the fire chief said that it was at, what, $1,750 a day approximately? Is that what the number was?
It was something like that.
Yeah, it was quite high.
And they're gonna charge a reasonable number, I think, of $500.
Figured it at $500 because the problem is, is you have other event places, it's not as big as the fair and you gotta make it affordable for everybody. So we tried to make one lump thing, we didn't want to overcharge them. We do appreciate the business coming in and all that, so.
We've had more and more events that meet the mass gathering that are, that are kind of asking for fire rescue coverage and they're saying, well, you do it for the fair, how come you won't do it for us? What's the difference? And it's just a really, it's, you know, I mean, they're all taxpayers, they're all private events that, you know what I mean? And that's, I think, the key.
Yeah, and that's the key, it is private events. It's not, it's not a.
Not an event of the town.
Not a town, town function or anything like that, so.
And there, what we've done is, because we brought Rick in and, you know, we talked about it, this and that. And what we've done is, we've set like a $500 a day limit on one, what's it called, forestry or whatever.
The utility truck.
Yeah, it won't be tying up an ambulance or anything like that.
You get that in one EMS firefighter.
Yeah, and then what'll end up happening is, is like when they have their truck pulls, the tractor pulls all back, they require, the insurance company requires them to have that, a fire engine on site. So they'll pay in an additional, whatever, and it's only like for three or four hours. But we've got a guideline in here and I think we're fair with them.
Yeah, I knew, and, you know, we have like the Volkswagen club that's come forward. We had last year was the Renaissance Fair. There are more and more events coming forward. We had Iron Tales at one point, remember, he was having that huge bonfire? He wanted fire and rescue down there and it's, it's an, you know, you want them to come to your town, but it's a balance because, you know, what if Joyce doesn't ever go to the Acton Fair? Why should her taxes pay, you know what I mean? It's like, so, I mean.
Brought up last year.
It was, it's been brought up for a couple of years, so.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, but it's, you know.
Okay.
Anyway, so that's the letter, recocate it. So that's something that I guess effective, you know, February 19th, we'll start as people come in. We'll at least be able to say to the other events that this is, the fees going forward and, you know.
Right. Yep, okay. We pretty much have hit upon everything that's in the letter. After careful, after careful consideration, the board of selectmen, in conjunction with the fire chief, had decided that beginning in 2020, all private event mass gatherings will be charged for the Acton, for the fire rescue coverage during their event. Please know this is not an easy decision for us to come to. The selectmen are very pleased to have the Acton Fair each year. This is actually going to the agricultural, to the York County Agricultural Association.
Because they're the only ones we know are guaranteed this year, we wanted to give them notice.
Yep. Utility vehicle with one EMS personnel is $110 per hour. $500 daily cap for this vehicle only with staff. This is a minimum coverage for mass gatherings. Ambulance with two EMS personnel is 120 per hour. Fire truck with two firefighter personnel is $162 per hour. So neither way, it's capped at 500 unless it's the truck pulls, that's a different, a different thing.
He's got the, yeah, he's got the rates on there.
So, so what's your wishes on the letter?
Make a motion, we sign the Acton Fair. I don't know, well, it's not the Acton Fair, it's actually gonna be for everybody, so.
Mass gathering permits.
Mass gathering permit fee for the EMS.
Yeah, that sounds good.
I'll second that.
Move to second to sign, okay.
So that's the only organization that the fire chief brought to me to draft the letter. Can you think of anybody else that we might, should give some advance notice?
Well, you gotta have the Volkswagens, I'm sure.
Well, they, in the past, they've all used their own, they've never used the town.
When they come in for a mass gathering permit, we can offer the service, but.
Yeah.
And it may be something, I mean, it won't make this year, but time to look at that ordinance and, you know, maybe update it.
And maybe incorporate this into it, so.
Right, so they do use.
Yep, okay, any further discussion? It's been moved to second. Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed? Do you want to do public comment before we go into executive session?
I think it's probably a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna go to public comment. Anyone from the public?
Am I timing? Am I, am I timing?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Go right ahead.
Okay, Joyce Backshee, do not live on a private road, but David, some of the things you said gave me an idea from a committee I used to be on. And one of those is, is right on the first page of this thing where you said something about, and remind me, this is not verbatim, okay? That you can only apply for this. If you get this award, let me see, I'll tell you how we do, did it. It was a scholarship fund. If you won the award this year for the scholarship, you could not reapply for it for three years.
Well, that's not what I'm saying.
Well, no, that's what I'm asking you and, because that gave other people the opportunity.
No, what I'm, what I'm trying to, what I want to see is, I don't want to see the same spot worked on five times. We pay for it five times.
Okay, so, so you can't.
Say, say there's a hill that keeps washing out.
Right, right.
Come to us because it's washing the lake.
Yeah.
And we put $4,000 or $5,000 into that hill. Next year it washes out and they come back and ask for the same money for the same thing.
No, that would be, no, no, I, I mean, I agree with that. It should be done the first time. But it would be okay if that association came to you because down here on the flat road, there's another issue they have to be?
As long as somebody from DEP or somebody, someone says that is detrimental to the league.
Okay, the other thing I was wondering about, because we used to do this too, is if this, if said person was applying for and got a grant or a scholarship in our case, we did not want to, it sounds awful of us, but we didn't want to give you $250 for the class if you were also getting $250 from the Lions Club for the class.
But I was, I was hoping that we can use this, like, I think I used an example, Tattle Street was talking about a project they want to pave. Okay, that's obviously something that's gonna last more than five years.
Right, right.
And they, they say it's a 60/40 and they gotta, they're having a hard time coming up with their 40, okay?
So there's no problem?
I don't think there's a problem.
I don't see a problem with that. I mean, we're doing the same exact thing with Goat Hill.
Oh, okay.
It's supposed to help, it's supposed to just help.
Yeah, no, no, I just, I just.
They've got one grant for, for a project and they're trying to get more grants to, to complete the project, so.
I just, I just wasn't, you know, that's why I wanted to ask you.
No, I don't see an issue there, you know.
And the only other thing, and again, because I don't have an ore in the water, well, except I'm a taxpayer, I guess, was the other thing you said, David, which I thought was a, a good comment, was you could get your determinations from like DEP or AWI or somebody like that.
Yes.
So would it be more palatable if the verbiage was changed from environmental engineer to a qualified something or other, something or other?
The problem with that is, I'm DEP certified.
Yeah, well.
Okay, there's a couple of people in this room are DEP certified.
Yeah.
Yourself, okay?
Right, yeah.
Been doing this a long time.
You've been doing it a long, long time.
Three minutes.
But at the same time, you really need somebody there that, that's what they do.
Instead of we're using that particular word.
You did take a little.
She's gonna work on it, because I want those other things put in there too.
Just the verbiage, that's what I was wondering about.
No, we're still working on it, so I appreciate it.
Okay, those are my questions.
Good input, thank you. Any other public comments?
Hi, Jay Ward, Acton, Abbott Road. I have a couple of questions and some comments. One is that it's not really having a great discussion on Article 43 is if no one in the audience can ask questions while you're going through it or even offer up suggestions. So I don't know if you want to change the way you do business, but if you really care about public input, allow time for public input rather than, you know, sitting through the whole rest of the meeting and then having to come back at the public period to ask some questions that you already went over, right? So you might want to think about resetting up your, your agenda. But I'm wondering how you had the conversation with the attorney about making the application correct? And the answer that he gave was, it's easier to get rid of the article rather than fixing this.
Very easy.
So I would, I mean, I, I'm just surprised if everyone is talking about, we want to save this this because, uh, obviously the town, um, in its wisdom voted for it, and so let's make it work, rather than getting an attorney that says, well, it's easier just to get rid of it than not fix it.
You misunderstood what I said.
Okay, um, and then, uh, the other question I have is, our original attorney, are, are you suggesting that he's unqualified to give a opinion because he lives in the town?
No.
That's what you said.
He's not the original attorney.
No, he's not the original.
You're taking-
I'm not saying, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying if he's the original attorney or what, I'm just saying-
He's asking.
Okay, first of all-
I'm asking the question about your suggestion-
You've asked three questions and we'd like to answer one of them.
Right, but you weren't the one that made that, that comment, but, okay.
The other ones I did.
Yep.
Let's let him finish his.
All right, and, um, it was under my impression that in Article forty-three, that cleaning of the culverts, for one thing, would be under an applicable use of Article forty-three. And if that's the case, I mean, isn't, isn't that maintenance or, and I guess my question would be, on the, the first page of this, um, it's in the bold, are you, um, concerned about the word routine or maintenance? Or, because I, I mean, I'm not sure when you're broad brush saying any routine maintenance wouldn't be considered. Um, I, I'm shocked at that, but that's what it, it intends.
Routine maintenance on a private road. Talking like grading, sweeping, or plowing, those are things.
Yeah, time.
Time?
Time.
Okay.
Thank you. You wanna answer any of those?
Um, well, there's so many questions all at once, I can't, I'm trying to figure out what you answer first, I guess, but-
You at least clarify the attorney piece, so it doesn't make him sound a mess.
Yeah, I mean, my original thought on that, thought pattern on that was that he was living on a private road. He is not living on a private road, that was my mistake, so scratch any of that, but we started with Bork and Clegg, Brad Moore in at Bork and Clegg, it doesn't make sense to switch back and forth, so.
And on the, when I mentioned, when he said that it would be easier to get rid of it, cause it would be, obviously, cause if you don't have an issue to deal with and it's gone, it's easy to deal with. But the reason why I believe he said that was because of all the stuff that come up to this point and all the gray areas, and try to make this all work. You remember, we're the only town in the state of Maine that does this.
Yeah.
And we're trying to make it right, and, um, you know, turning my words around, saying oh, this, that, I, at the end of the day, I like to see something that we make sure that we can put legally, that nobody's tail ends on the line. We've had emails from individuals from in town saying that we broke the law, that we should pay back the money that we gave you guys personally. These people have sent us emails on that, okay? Probably didn't know that. So we're just trying to make this right, and the lawyer's doing what we asked him to do, cause that's why we have him. And the reason why we don't have the, during the meeting, okay, is cause typically when you have something like this at some point, you're gonna have your road committees, you'll have your, uh, meetings before town meeting, to discuss this. But we have, we're, we're going through the attorneys, we're asking people like Wendy Garland, people that deal in this, not the people's opinions, we're trying to get facts.
And just to end on that, the, the attorney, that comment was taken completely out of contents. He did not in any way encourage or say to the board to just stop doing this.
Just, this is gonna be, this isn't gonna be easy to do.
It was just the way it was stated.
Yeah, I probably- It's gonna be quite difficult to, to do, so.
He is working diligently on that, and he is-
But in defense of us, we are trying our hardest to make this work.
Absolutely.
And I think at the end of the day, this'll be a better product than what we had.
Absolutely.
It'll, it'll go to the spots that absolutely need it.
The people who get the money should not have to worry about they may have to give it back because we didn't do it right.
Yeah.
Right.
And we've been accused of that already.
Any other public comments?
Uh, Joe DiOrio, Lakeside Drive, Road Association, um, if I understood you correctly, Dave, earlier you mentioned that, um, we could get reimbursed for the, um, engineering?
Yeah, you, you add that right into your quote.
Okay. By the time we pay that, we wouldn't have any money to do, to do the work.
But you didn't listen, we talked about raising the money. I can tell you right now, I called Joe, Joe Anderson from, um, York County Soils, I don't know if he's there anymore, but I called him up, he never, ever charged us to come up and say, you gotta do this, you gotta do this, you gotta do this. DEP, Chris Copey, never charged me to come up and say, thanks, they need an ass belt for this, this is what you gotta do to fix this and that. That's why we put that in there. I've dealt with all these, these environmental consultants for years, they've never, ever charged us. But if you get into a big project, okay, that's kinda out of our hands, where if you need a real engineer, okay, obviously it's gonna be more than what we're gonna be able to afford anyways, but, I mean, that's another whole case, but typically, I've never, ever been charged from an environmental engineer due to AWOL, York County Soils, or DEP.
Okay, good. The other thing, um, on Lakeside Drive, we had a fair amount of work done last, uh, early fall, uh, before any of this changed, as far as the application. Uh, we had the work done, we had pictures before and after, and what I'm looking at is, um, getting reimbursed. Now, you're talking about having, uh, estimates done beforehand, which is fine, but this was all done beforehand. What can we do about that?
We don't know, we don't know at this moment.
I didn't vote this in, I wasn't a board member then. The issue came up, when the auditor brought it up, and then it blew up, okay? What you did, that's the problem. Everybody put the cart before the horse did the work, then give us a bill.
Well, I, I understand that, but-
But we did tell him to do that, so.
Yeah, but I wasn't part of that, so.
Right, but, but it was okay then.
But the problem is right now, is the way we're set up right now, we put a halt to it because we were given money out, find out we weren't supposed to be doing it. And so we had to put a halt to it. I can't tell you whether or not you can get that money. Obviously, right now, the way we're doing this, no, because if we go by the guidelines we're setting, if we go back, then everybody else on the road's gonna do the same thing.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna look at these, we're gonna look at it case by case.
Definitely.
We wanna make sure that we don't over-sold back up to-
I believe that we were probably one of, maybe two-
Yeah.
Uh, associations that were in this situation.
Yeah, there's not many that's in that situation, so.
I mean, I, I, myself, I think we, you know, see if we can work as long as we don't-
I think we're responsible to take care of what you did.
Contra dick what we're trying to do.
You know, if everything's done the right way, because at that, I, the two or three that are hanging out there is our responsibility to look at them and take care of them.
Right.
Because there was, there were guidelines about that.
I would've, I would've gladly got an estimate ahead of time if I only knew.
Right.
Yeah. Time's up on your side, so. We will, uh, yeah, and we said, I think we said back when we very first-
I thought so, too.
Revamp this process, we would look at those on a case by case basis.
Right.
So we did not throw those out, um, altogether, so.
Those applications were in fact sent back because, um, one of Langley Shores was another one that was, so what do we do? Resent, uh, re-submit them?
Not yet.
Not yet.
We'll let you know.
Ken Wynn, Tattle Street, um, a couple of questions. We mentioned having the DEP come in and look at this, um, and, and you said this is their job, but you said they're very, they're really stretched thin, so, are they stretched thin?
Let him finish his.
So I'm just trying to see if, if, are the lawyers saying we have to have the DEP come in and look at that, or is it something you guys feel is the way to do? What am I, what do we, I'm trying to understand which one is this?
If you read the article, it says right on it, Department of Environmental Protection or the Select Board, okay?
Okay, I saw that.
I felt, and I, and I think we felt-
And the lawyer, all of us, and the lawyer.
That it was better to take, cause we're not environmental engineers.
I understand this.
I might be DEP certified, I'm dug all over the place, but I'm not D, I'm not DEP, I'm not an engineer.
Right, I understand that.
And I don't think that the Select Board should be hanging themselves out there saying, yep, this is, this is good, that's not.
I understand that, but I was just trying to understand this, because with the DEP, are they, if you talk to them, were they agreeable to come down and do, if every road wants to be looked at and then has to be checked, are they agreeable to come down and do all that?
So we were just talking about that.
Every road that I've worked on, private, town, I got a phone number, you call them, you schedule a time, they'll come down and meet with you. They don't charge you for that.
Oh, okay, that's what I'm hoping that, Dave, is the case.
They are the state of Maine, the state of Maine's like, they're gonna charge you to come down and look at, see if, you know.
Okay, I, okay, that's, that's good to know, because I do know, like, we do have a, a proposal for doing some stuff with Tattle Street, and if I'm in, we got a bill for two thousand dollars. So this is why I was saying, it's gonna be two thousand dollars and we're only gonna get three thousand.
Who did that?
It's for York, York Soils and, uh, the DEP, they're both involved with this doing.
They gave you a, they gave you a-
No, they haven't get, there's gonna be a proposal, it's gonna cost us two thousand dollars to have this study done.
Oh, the study, yeah.
The study, so that's what it's gonna cost us.
That's different, a study's different than coming down and-
This is, they just come down and, you know, what, like hotspots and what's, what's-
Yeah, cause most of the time they have a list, and that was one of the things that Linda, um, Wendy Garland, I, I think it was Wendy, yeah.
Wendy Garland or Linda Shire?
Linda Shire, the one from Wakefield. She's the one that, I got, I got confused right now.
You're changing the names, I know what you mean, yeah, I understand.
I, I, but they put right on there that it had to be a designated location. And that was one thing that we weren't looking at, was, okay, if you have a, best case, uh, is, um, Bulge, up in Bulge, okay? Come to final, they didn't require, they didn't, they, they don't have the requirements anyways, but you take that, that road association, there's a bunch of roads out there.
Yeah.
Not all of them are on the water.
Yeah.
Okay?
Right.
And then some of the roads might have already been taken care of, and there's only a couple of spots needing to be done, but doesn't mean everybody else is, ain't able to get the money. They, they have designated spots, hotspots, and if you're not on one of those listed areas, then you don't qualify.
Okay. Another question, the issue of maintenance and repair, now, I, I take it you got, you're saying that maintenance is something every year, is what you're saying. So repair is something that's damaged and has to be repaired, so acceptable that. So although gra, uh, the crown could be damaged, does that come back as repairs? Cause that's been damaged.
That's what I said earlier.
That, that gets into, that's why isn't that eligible?
Every year, most of these camp roads, all they're grading their roads in the spring and the fall, something they do every year.
More of a maintenance.
If you don't grade your road in the spring and the fall, you're not doing your road maintenance.
Yeah.
Well, still, that's, we're still taking it off, that's still redamaged, it's damaged, we've gotta repair it.
But it's-
That's what I'm trying, that's the technicality.
But it's still, it's still more maintenance than it is a damage. It's, it's something happens every year and your time's up, so, but.
I mean, you know, I've been watching people here speak for a lot more than three minutes a lot of the time. Oh, yes, it has, it's been up, well, we, one issue, we know.
Yeah, no, we let you go, you know, you did, he, we, we answered a lot, some of your questions, so we took some of your time, so that's why I let you, you know, your question continue, so, yeah.
I think he meant before other meetings, and he is, he's cracked.
Before other meetings, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and that's why I asked them in the beginning if I'm timing, that's-
Never been a big fan of the three minute.
We gotta get either consistent or-
I know.
Change it.
You know, there was a tremendous, Steve Geranian, Langley Shores Association, it's a lot of work done to set up our Title forty-three, okay, Article forty-three. It wasn't done by a bunch of idiots, it was done by people who had a lawyer, it was done with people who had knowledge, we brought in people who had knowledge, and we put together a program. That was presented to the selectmen, the selectmen let it all go, the warrant committee, the warrant committee approved it, went to the town meeting, it got approved. So number one, when I spoke out before, it was just because you pressed a button, you said you could just kill it, well, you can't, cause the town voted it. The selectmen aren't all powerful, almighty bow to, okay? The town runs this town.
Yep.
You people administer it, but the town people voted for this article. Okay, number two, in here you've got the, hey, did you get a three nineteen grant? If you got a three nineteen grant, most of the things you're asking for have been approved by DEP, okay? If you got that, you are an association, you do have a, you do have a study. DEP did study your lake, you can go to get the list, the list if you want.
Maybe that should be on the hall.
Okay, those things can be done.
With your attachments.
The other thing is, it's all big argument about maintenance or repairs or whatever. That is up to the town to decide what maintenance is, what repair is, cause the state does not. The state has absolutely no, no dog in the fight. They don't wanna tell you what maintenance is, they don't wanna tell you, they wanna leave it to you people, okay? So when you say, we'll do anything, we really want this program, we wanna help it, we wanna make it go, well, you can help make it go. You can determine something favorable in terms of maintenance, what it is. I understand that if the crown of the road is knocked off, you know, it's gotta be replaced, whether that's a maintenance thing or what, but that's a very important part of maintaining a road or keeping a road from moving into the lake. How the road is maintained controls what goes into the lake. And there's been studies done, when we started doing our road, they said we put over six tons of dirt into the, into the lake, you know? That got stopped. We done things, we've made it a lot better, but you've gotta understand that these things that the people have done, they're spending their money to do. And granted, most of them are vacation homes and so forth, but you gotta also understand that seventy-five percent of the tax money that comes into this town comes into the people, those are the people that bring the money. And, you know, other than using our fantastic transfer station, uh, we don't really get to use much else. So this is one of the reasons that this committee was formed, to ask, can we get some funding for the road? And that's why it was put together. All right, ninety seconds is up.
Thank you.
It's the shortest speech I ever made.
Thank you. No, I mean, we're trying to work through this thing and get it, get it where it's fine tuned and get it where it works, so, that's, you know, really all we're trying to do, make it better, so. Okay, any other public comment? Nope, okay, do I hear a motion?
I need for the chair.